You don't need the pastor or first pastor at one point.
I was a pastor, I get to do it for church.
And then he also is, he also does hip hop. It's the same algorithm. No, no, it's the same guy.
Okay. I'm like, I don't know about those, but I can confirm the other.
A few minutes before we start. I think it's the weather and the wind and the dust, but I just.
You should be on my road.
Hey.
Did you see what they did to my house?
Looked like they were trying to bury your house. The curb was like way up here.
Four and a half inches higher.
What'd they say about it?
Well, Michael doesn't have any solutions yet.
Every single time.
Always. Oh, that would be a good question.
Devalues my property.
It does. A little flow back.
Resale value goes down because of that. Because of that improvement in the city, personal property. The resale value of my home goes down. How's that okay?
I don't get questions, I don't know.
So the flooding came over the street and went into those people's homes right there in Kirk and Ford. Essentially, it looks as if, and I am not an engineer, but it looks as if now we have the same problem. Coming off Fifth Street. Is it okay to improve the city project? To improve the city of the devalue right of property. I sure am so, because I'm not very happy about it. Four inches, it's the top of the curb is four inches higher than my house. The foundation down. Just looking outside my front door. There's too much going on this weekend, it's only two days.
I'm sorry, we can't pay until we receive a notice.
Yeah, I've got two more days to do it before.
That's not funny. That's not funny.
What's that?
That's not funny.
But I'm back here tomorrow. You need to report.
Oh, yeah, because it's Wednesday. It's only Wednesday.
It's only reset.
Yay.
Okay. It says sixty seconds.
Sixty seconds.
It says live in sixty seconds. Tip that says maybe for us.
So we're going to make you a sure and push that button again?
Do you want that button?
Yeah, if it's lit up or pull it or toggle the other one.
I'm so sorry. Their phone is not really cooperating today, we've been testing it all up.
My internet's been really crummy today.
It's something with YouTube, and I talked to Aspen, and basically YouTube has changed some things because we are, we were able to toggle on, enable auto stream, and it just worked fine the first few meetings, and the last two it keeps turning itself off, turning itself off, and we turned it on again like before we walked over here. So. Yeah, she's got to go do it on her computer, you can't do it from, you can't do it from the app in the trunk. It has to be on the computer. Yeah, we got it.
Okay, I guess we're.
Just tell us, text us, tell me and tell her it's working. Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, Sarah?
Yes, Justin.
Yes.
Oh, I stand for, here, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful day, and I thank you for the recent rain, and I ask you to watch over us as more storms come in, and I ask you to look over our community and over this governing body and help us to make good decisions. In Christ's name I pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Training and discussion necessary to participate in the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group Promotion Program, including adoption of a Perkins City Commission Handbook.
All right. We did have David Webber scheduled to come tonight to just deal with this issue and number six. The training aspect of this, this agenda item, I think you've already done. And it was, it's really more to discuss and I, I guess it would have maybe been somewhat training if David had come and seen some things about our book that he doesn't like, but which I, which is still a possibility. But this is a living, breathing document, and your handbook can be changed at any time. And so one of the things that he and I discussed is that if he comes on a different date, we can always revisit the, or when he comes, he's still planning to come on every day. We can discuss the handbook if there's something that somebody sees later, or, you know, it's always, it's always something that can be changed. I will also say that I, I've apologized to Bob many times because, and I think you've heard me, because I've said, I said to you guys, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem, we can get a handbook, and then most of it he had to do. And so, he, I think he's done a pretty, pretty good job. And so hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at it. This book is probably three, three times the size of the, the handbook that O-MAG puts up on their website as a possibility. It's probably a third the size of, of David Webber's. But I think this is probably more workable than David's as far as what you guys are, what, what counselors are and commissioners are really going to read and work through. And so, like I said, we can add and change it as it goes. My only thoughts, I want, I want to answer, I want us to answer any questions you have about anything in the handbook. And then I want to talk to you about the last, about the sanctions section of the Code of Ethics. That's, I, if you look at the Code of Ethics, and I'll just give you a practice and then we can come back to it, but you'll see that I've got two, two, two last pages in your book. One of the specific questions I asked Annie, when she was fixing my error on this, is whether these are three, or three reminders, because what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I wanted you guys to be able to pass this book tonight if you want to. But I've got two different sanctioned sections or proposals in that. In, in the book, you'll hopefully decide which one you want, we'll pull out the one you don't want. But other than that, the book I think is, is, it is what, it is what staff is proposing. So, where do you want us to start, Mr. Mayor?
Well, does anybody have any questions or anything?
Is, is there a provision anywhere in our, I've missed it if there is, is there a provision anywhere that requires the commission to review it on a, an annual, triennial basis, anything like that?
There's nothing that requires you to, but if, if you don't, you won't qualify for O-MAG's program and their $2,600 check every year.
So does that program require you to review your handbook? Okay, that's all I.
Yes.
That's good, okay.
It does, that's one of their their annual, I think that actually their annual requirements are the same thing that, that you have been through. Except that the training is just for the people who've come on during that year. You still have to look at your declarations each month like we did, I think, you still need to, have to approve your handbook, any changes to the handbook, and do your self-evaluation, which I think we would want to do, to see how you feel like, not that it's always the same people, but how in general you feel like things have changed. So that's, I think it's a well, well-versed, timely energy, it won't be nearly the energy and time that this, you know, just putting, getting the handbook put together initially would be. That it would probably be a good time for, for staff to propose what, some additions to the handbook and things like that.
Maybe we could just look at doing it in January since that's, wasn't that the first month we kind of started this? And it would be sort of an off time for staff members.
You mean you don't want to do it in the middle of budget season ratio?
Yes, that's true. We just might have to pass the resolution. We'll have to ask them how often they'll pay us, is the issue.
Yeah, if it's a calendar year, if it's a fiscal year.
Right.
Or I can ask a question.
Yeah, that would be nice to not do it this time of year.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Your proposed page thirteen, so our option would be.
Come in on the, on Code of Ethics.
Yes, in the Code of Ethics.
Okay, we'll talk about, let's talk about that real quickly then. Everybody will turn to the section, Code of Ethics, it's about the third, the third section. If you go to page twelve has the beginning of the sanctions section. That's going to be, I'm proposing that that be the same no matter where you, what else goes from there. Page thirteen and fourteen are one possibility. Okay? And then there's another possibility of the new page thirteen. You'll see, you can just pull them out if you want, but you'll see that they're very different in that one's real, real in depth and the other one is not. In other words, the first paragraph on, on each page thirteen is the same. The second paragraph talks about that, what you do if there's an allegation of a violation of the Code of Ethics. And the short ver, the short version is a kind of a redraft of David Webber's. Don't tell him, but his language didn't make sense to me. But once I went through and really tried, I, I was able to make it make sense, and I feel like it, it's what he meant to say. And it covers it. It's just a lot broader, saying, essentially saying, both, both, both sections, both proposals say that the city manager and/or the city attorney should direct, be directed to investigate any allegations. And then you take the next step that's appropriate. Short section says, next step that's appropriate could include, and it just lists some broad possibilities and, and stops. On the long version, it lays out possibilities. You know, you can do a referral, which quite frankly, under, on this list of five, if we see anything that needs to be referred, we being the city manager and I, probably would hopefully agree to that. But if we, and if we saw something that needed to be referred to another agency for investigation, we would probably do that. We probably wouldn't need your, your direction to do that. But we might, we might bring it to you if it was, if it's a close, close call, depending on what the allegation is. The second one, second option in that list is to issue a letter of notification when the violation is unintentional. Unintentional is, would be a matter of your interpretation, and that's an option. Third is to issue a letter of admonition, not just notification, but admonition, if it's minor or may have been unintentional. Fourth is issuance of a letter of recommend, reprimand, if you find that it was intentional, it was knowingly or intentionally done. Fifth is passage of a resolution of censure, or a recommendation of recall. And then the, the rest of that long form talks about, is procedural. As to the procedures that should be followed if we're going to. And it's really the difference between, it's outside the difference between if you're doing a notification, admonition, or remand as opposed to a censure, which is the more serious, most serious of your options. So this puts some parameters around what your options are. I will tell you, I think I, I already did tell you kind of broadly. I pulled that language from another state several years ago when I was going through this process with the city of Bixby. Because they were like all over wanting this to be really laid out, until they went through it and finally they were like, yeah, I'll take the short language. So it, it's really, it really is dependent, it's completely up to you. If, whether you want to make it specific as how to handle it, or you want to give yourselves more latitude. From a legal perspective, it's just going to really depend on the fact situation as to what, you know, there's a good, if it, I don't expect you ever to need this. But if you did, looking at the facts, I may sometime go, gosh, wish we had the long version. Or I may sometime go, gosh, wish we had the short version, you know? Depending on what the, what the facts are. So I can't look at you and say either one is better, because I don't know what the, what the future holds. I'll answer any questions.
Does anybody have any, any thoughts or any, any opinions on it? I'll just say, you know, my opinion, I think I kind of like the longer version better, just the way things are spelled out a little bit more, but
I'm very.
Collective decision, so.
I'm very torn.
I get it, yeah.
I'm ready for someone to tell me their perspective because I don't, I see the value in both of them. So I would love for someone to help sway me in one direction or the other.
Long version because, to me, it's based like state statute. If you violate this, then this is the consequence for that. And it tells you what you can do for that consequence, that's why I like, I prefer the longer version.
Prefer to have a plan. So I like the longer version, because it gives us options. And I feel like it does give us some flexibility to decide the severity of whatever we're dealing with as well. But it does provide direction.
Naturally, I like the short one, because I think the long one puts you into a box, and the short one gives you a lot more flexibility, but I'm.
The, from the legal perspective, you're going to have to follow, you know, you're, you're, you're going to give someone a lawsuit more likely if you don't follow your, your own procedures. So it's one of those things where the long version's not a good idea if we're not going to really cross our, cross our Ts and dot our Is. But on the other hand, there's, I've seen, I, I actually did some research, not, no, not, not far from specifically on this. And they, you can, you can get sued for, for not following the procedures that are set out, or you can be sued because you didn't have any procedures to follow.
The most important takeaway is to never need it. That's the most important takeaway.
Yeah. I guess I'm torn mainly because, you know, my rose-colored glasses self likes to think that the need for this shouldn't be there if we are all doing the things we need to be doing. And so it's, I, I guess to me that's one of those where, yes, it's great to have a plan, but I would like to think we would never even need to go there, so let's make it simple and move on. So, but I guess I'm still very torn. Like, I'd like to think we'd never go there, I'd like to think not even something we need.
The most important sentence in my view is the, the last sentence of that second paragraph that, that says, "Commission action can include but is not limited to." And so the fact that it says can include one, two, three, four, five, doesn't mean it has to include one, two, three, four, five. And so, and, and part of the reason I say that is because the short version in thirteen says, "Discussion and counseling is an option." You know, some, some cases may just simply warrant a private discussion between the mayor and a commission member or, you know, so, anyway. I, I'm not going to dig my heels in on one version or the other, I think they both have merit.
I'm sorry, I'm not more thoughtful.
That's okay. So, let me ask this question, because this document would also be a public document. What is the risk, and I'm really asking the five of us, what is the risk that a, a citizen would see page thirteen and then say, well, you haven't done what this says? As opposed to page thirteen short version, oh, well, you have lots of options here. Have you, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just curious, what is the risk? Do you see a perceived risk, maybe I'm making something up?
Well, the, a citizen, this is not, this handbook doesn't establish any, any rights. And it certainly is, it is a internal document adopted by you to govern yourselves. It's not enforceable by the citizens, they couldn't sue and say you violated X, Y, Z of your Code of Ethics. It's for yourself, it's whatever you're adopting for yourselves. So a citizen could, could come in and say, well, you didn't follow your own rules, and so we think you should be recalled, or we think you should be sanctioned for not following your own rules or whatever, but they have no, they're no teeth as, as citizens. In other words, you could have a, a lawsuit by citizens saying that you spent the money wrong. You know, there's, there is a mechanism for that. There's, and of course, there's all way, all kinds of ways people can sue you. But this is not really one of them, this is an internal document for yourselves. At least that's certainly what I would argue if, if a citizen wanted to.
One quick question. So on the short version, it says these actions include but are not limited to. Are the options in the long version, options that can be carried out in the short version, because it says not limited to? So if you did the short version, you could still follow the long version if you felt like those things were necessary? My understanding? Just a thought. It's not a if, then situation, but it does give you, does give you all of those options still without nailing your feet to the board. For some of that stuff that might be gray. But I like, I mean, I like if, thens, but I don't know, I, it's torn. I don't, I really don't know how I feel about this, guys.
I don't know, I still like seeing the, what, if you do this, this is the consequence for it, so you know exactly what you're stepping into.
I respect that. I kind of look at this as more of a, a, a standard and not necessarily a, not necessarily a direction of this is exactly what's going to happen. But I feel like that's what he's saying. Well, I think it's giving the commission options, if there's an issue, these are the things that we could choose to do.
You could, could follow, but it's not necessarily a hundred percent this is what's going to happen.
But I feel like that's exactly what, is that not what you're saying? That's exactly what he's saying, so you guys are saying something different than him.
Let me just point you to, before number one, and then one, two, three, four, five, this sentence says, "Commission actions can include but is not limited to." So.
It is the short version with the long format.
With some, with some, I mean, it, it, no matter what, you can do what you choose to do. This is parameters.
Short version with suggestions added to it.
Yes. It is.
One point of note in the long version is the one, two, three, fourth paragraph and the fifth paragraph, so that the last two paragraphs of that one ends with and one contains the, the language, "The, the action of the city commission shall be final and not subject to further review." And so it adds a layer of finality. And so it adds a layer of finality to to that, to that action, that it's not necessarily in the short version.
Although I'm practically, that would be the case no matter what. Once you made, unless, okay, let's do a little bit of Roberts Rules of Order here. But, um, if you, if you voted to do something, no matter what your code said, and let's say it was three, two. And, um, it's not gonna be, that action is not gonna be reconsidered unless one of the people who voted in the, um, one of the three, the vote, the one, ones who won, one of the people who won asks that it be reconsidered. Yeah, in the majority. And it's an odd rule because they, they don't want the minority to be able to keep bringing up something we already decided. But if, if you wanted, if you guys make a decision and then one of, one of us comes to you and says, oh, we didn't realize that one of the people in the majority can say, let's just reconsider it on the, and it has to be on the next agenda. Or I have actually seen, and I, and I even said, and I'm like, well, okay, I'll say it, but don't do it. I've seen, uh, I worked with a guy who, he would vote if he thought he was his side, or wherever he wanted it land, was gonna be a three, two split or whatever, he would vote with the other side just so he could bring it back the next time, which was a problem, so. Right, we don't want to play with the Roberts Rules of Order in that fashion. But I guess my point is broad practical purposes, it's gonna be done once it's done. Yes, ma'am?
I don't have a problem with the long version, but I wish we could add discuss and counseling the individual on the violations as, instead of five, list six things. Make that an outlined option. And to me, that's the one thing from the short version that I truly appreciate outstanding from the list of five. That's the one thing that I lean towards the short version because of. That being like an outlined, I know it says but not limited to. But if it's a clearly defined option, I would feel much better about that personally. And I would be able to support the long version in that case. Explain?
So God, if you, sounds like you would like to add a new one, new number one.
Well, I think it would be number two because, yeah, legal reasons, I think Trump and all.
That says, um, discussing and counseling the individual, discussing with and counseling the individual on the violation?
Thoughts on that?
Well, I actually agree with you, because your tendency is gonna be to look at these five options and pick one.
Right, that's, and that's why I don't like that option, like, that's why.
That would just be a tendency, just like a natural human tendency, oh, well, you know, I can pick.
These are my five things to do.
I'm gonna skip over that sentence that says can include but not limited to and go to the five things that are obvious.
Anybody else?
I agree.
Yes.
I agree.
Does that still work for you, Tammy?
How about discussing? What, and just what I've written, and I could, it could be better written, but you'll get my drift. Discussing or counseling with or for the individual. In other words, you may not want to be the counselor, you may wanna, you may want to counsel with, or you may want to say, don't get counseling. So how can that be better word than, on the Bible?
Tammy, I have a question. In the case that somebody needed counseling, shouldn't it, shouldn't it be, shouldn't it be written? When they go in to talk to them, shouldn't there also be a document that is given to them about why they're being spoken to?
Counseling with?
With the commissioner who has violated this? And it not just be verbal?
I think it would depend. I, I think that given the case law, there may be times where you really just want it to be verbal.
Okay, I can see that too.
So the language that Rachel has come up with is discussion and, and counseling, counseling with, or discuss and counsel, and discuss and counsel with. Discussion and counsel. Oh, I'll see what you're saying again. She wants, she wants discussion. So, okay, discussion and counseling with or for the individual, with or for the individual on the violations. Discussion and/or counseling with or for the individual on the violations would be your new number two. Does that language work?
Sounds great. Thank you. I'm much better about that.
I don't want mine out. So, yeah. Okay. Anything else? Okay, I think, um, anything else then about the ethics code? Questions, discussion, anything else, and I know we've already had one discussion about, about it. I didn't, I didn't really, I should have at that point given you your options on that last page. Anything else about the ethics code that we want to discuss? Okay. Anything else about the rest of the handbook that you had questions about or discussion? Anything else?
I don't wanna say that publicly. I'm laughing, it's, it's just, I'm being silly. I don't wanna say it publicly.
Tell me later.
What?
No?
I'd like to thank the staff for doing a great job putting it together. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
You are.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting it together for us, it's, it's good stuff.
Okay, hold on a second.
Are you rewarding something yet again? I said, are you rewording something again?
I am. Not rewording, but I'm, I'm.
Okay.
So it probably makes sense to do a, a motion just regarding the Code of Ethics. So, um, is we don't have?
Maybe would it be possible to make a motion to recommend adoption of the handbook with the revisions to the Code of Ethics?
Yes, but we need to wait until you have under number five.
Okay, so we ready to move to five then? Is that what we're saying?
Ready to vote?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I consider a discussion of possible action to adopt a per city commission handbook.
So would you like for me to make that motion then? Cause I would love, be happy to do that. Um, I'd make a motion to adopt the city commission handbook as written with revisions to the Code of Ethics as recommended.
Second?
Okay, hold on. Revisions to the Code of, to the long version of the Code of Ethics as recommended?
Yes.
Or a short version, whichever.
Yeah, no, I, I'd make a recommendation, um, to adopt with revision to the long version of the Code of Ethics as recommended.
A second thought?
To adopt the city commission handbook as written with revisions to the long version of the Code of Ethics as recommended, right?
Yes.
Nice.
Cool. Erin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah? Justin?
Yes.
Okay, before we move on, I would ask that every one of you take the short version out of your book and read it to me. So that 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 never gets left in a book and gets confusing for somebody.
Signed it too.
Oh, you're, you're good.
I guess I wanna look at it again sometime.
Oh, okay. And then we will, um, get to you. And I'll just probably bring it, or later we'll bring it to the next meeting. A whole new Code of Ethics for you to substitute in your book, just another, another printout with this one change that you, that you decided. And then that's exciting, that we have a, we have a, we have a look.
Good job, guys.
So exciting.
It is exciting, because I think, one of the reasons I think it's great that you got this done is because the commission's gonna change and wouldn't you have, and I hope you would have liked to have something like this when you started.
Definitely.
So.
And, and as, just a general comment, as e- as accessible as things are online, my birth decade makes me having a paper copy in my hand much a happier person.
Oh, does it? Okay.
It does, I just.
Me too, me too.
I like hard copies as well.
I will have, I will ultimately have a, um, electronic version on, online. And everybody gets the invite to a Google Drive.
Yes.
I like electronic forms.
I know, that's really good.
That was a great idea.
It's a great idea. I'm glad to have it. It's super easy for meeting, you know, putting everything in a meeting folder. That's wonderful.
It's not something though that's gonna go on the city's, um, on the city's webpage or be accessible, cause again, it's, it's yours, it's for, it's for you. And we'll get it to you in whatever format you, you deserve.
All right, we done now with that section. During a discussion regarding long range goals and planning, I think we're just gonna postpone this till.
Do we need a motion to table that or anything?
No, there's an action.
No, because we're not going to, again, Roberts rules, technically you can table something or you can continue, you can table it. You have, technically, you have to take it up the next meeting, or it is, it's, um. Can't even be deemed as denied. I don't like the word table at all. But if you table it or continue it, um, then you have to continue it to a particular date, and we don't know yet when David's going to be available. And we want, what I took this, uh, I really felt like this needed to be, to just be not doubled tonight, because I really think when you discuss long range planning, it would be most valuable if you have both Bob and David here. And so, um, what, I talked to David and he's glad to come back and, um, we'll get that on your agenda as another special meeting, um, but not, not anytime real soon. We'll figure out what, what we need. We'll make sure we have five commissioners.
All right, so no, no action on that, and that'll be reviewed later. Come back to that later. All right, so we'll move later then.
Hold on a second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, everybody, thanks. You're good, thank you.
Did it?
Yeah.
I have orange stick, please.
Justin, I figured out my, um, what do you call it?
Hot spot?
Hot spot.
Yes.
But I have to go into MTT and have it only like refund it, rename it to something different. And it still takes ten minutes before my phone comes up, so I don't.
Really?
But it usually does. So I was gonna see if it comes, if it came up yet.